I pay. You open.
Okay, this is the pre-meeting of the planning zoning commission on March nineteenth, twenty twenty four, back thirty P M. All commissioners are present except for John Rawlings and number city staff. Let's first review the agenda for today. We have communications report. Bring in, I assume we have some frame. Then comes the minutes or any questions or comments or concerns now about the minutes. Item two is transportation master plan Jeremy.
He's the consultant for it'll be used.
Yeah, he'll be here. He's with W C G. He's the the lead manager engineer with conducting our transportation last we buy that. He'll just be giving an update on the progress.
Very good. Item three is a Kennison subdivision, Larry.
Yeah, it's a two lot subdivision of twenty seven hundred plus. It's close to the edge of the city as you think. No issues.
What was the venue event center, Megan?
That's an event center on Ninety South. Just doing events.
Are we required to attend those events?
This is this has been here before, hasn't it? We've done this famous before. Not this particular one, but this event center. They're coming back now for.
I don't think so.
Well, this is a new one.
We had some reception centers in Chertis.
Okay.
Are there any concerns with this one similar to the last one? Was it Golden Imperial? Does that sound right? Any concerns similar to that one where it was a spin off and the prior version had all sorts of phone calls and other issues?
Yeah, we've just added conditions, like I talked to the police department and fire department and just added conditions based on.
As we get each one, we get each one. So we've been able to figure out. We have to learn what the detrimental ones are and most of them. All of them generally revolve around parking lot activity and the consumption of outcomes. And so that's what most of the detrimental things or the conditions to mitigate those are such as security in the parking lot. Type of people that actually know how to be security guards, that type of thing. So noise.
What are the hours of operation? I'm sorry, I should have read that.
It's pretty.
Eleven A M. To twelve A M. On days and eleven to one A M. On weekends. And the thing with this one is there's no residential around it. So.
Didn't see that. Okay.
That was the problem with the one down. Seven of the others. It's right across the fence. But this one is.
In the middle.
Other shopping.
Yeah, okay.
Item number five is the Taylor Farms Rezone.
I'm filling in for Taylor on that. So it is on thirteenth West reason from agriculture eight five to R one eight. And we don't really have any issues with that. It's all. Grabbing that. Yeah.
Really gonna do with the cows?
What are they gonna do with the vet? Don't they put horses back there for the vet?
Maybe cows, cows, but there is some horses back.
I think when Dr. Taylor was there, he used to, but.
Well, his daughter.
He died.
Was running it after he passed away. I think the dogs there, so I know.
The veteran office isn't going.
Okay.
Is the field and that one of the bigger sheds in the back.
I kind of wondered if that wasn't going to happen when he passed.
I mean, I know we're not talking about homes being next to that tonight, but noise with homes right next to.
I think that their bad practice, I could be wrong, will have to do a little more research, but I think it's a generally go to small animal. There's not a lot of.
They don't do the large animals like they used to. The old doctor Taylor used to do horses and stuff. But now all they do is cats and dogs. They don't even do it. Any more animals than just the dogs and cats. Yeah.
Just curious.
And it does meet the land use map. So.
It fits in really well there.
Did get a number of phone calls I heard from Julie.
Yeah, I was surprised how much negative commentary there was given.
Most of we got said, well, we want to keep the open space. We really don't own the open space. We're going to keep it. And but I can't be of the. So that's everyone I read is that way to some of the.
There was one that was four.
Yeah, as well.
Excited about.
And I think, you know.
Social media, there was a lot of positive too.
But Nate, Nate Nestor, I think connects the neighborhoods really well.
You're perfect.
This one was Gardner Mill.
I'm not asking for higher density or additional traffic.
That's why.
I think if I was in one of those older, I'd be happy because now the one you're looking at the house and boy, he'd have to wind. They'd have to wind around. It's really a long ways to get around the roads. So this will just down to thirteen hundred. So. I think, you know, as Trish said, it's not really going to subdivision. We're not talking about tonight. I think most of the increased traffic will be from the older part through the newer part, not vice versa.
Well, the big, at least what I saw on social media was they were happy that it was single family housing. Because they were afraid that they were going to put some twin homes or something. And you would have probably gotten a lot more negative feedback, I think, if that was the case.
Oh, rages for higher density.
Right.
When they just come in with a straight subdivision like this.
And I think the traffic will be, it will increase, obviously it's going to, but it will be minimal compared to an apartment complex or duplexes or something like that.
You got any questions about the agenda? Doing training.
All right. So the two things I'm going to go through tonight, one is a segment I actually showed it years ago, one or a couple. They have seen it before. It's a five minute segment from a league of cities and towns training on ethics. Everybody's favorite topic.
We're missing this the other night, so this is good.
And then the second thing I'll do after that is I'll pass around some city code and state code provisions just regarding powers and duties of planning commissions and land use authorities. So we'll start with this piece. And then I'll say a few things we can, I can answer any questions on. Yeah, that's a good spot. They're just finished talking about grandma. So this was a training where they talked about several subjects and grandma was the one government records right before ethics. So she'll get to the ethics in just a second. Now, it isn't any training. You go to the next topic and then people still want to talk about the last topic. So the screen says ethics, but. In particular, she's going to talk about municipal officers and employees ethics act, which is the main one that we come under. Talking about vexatious grandma request her where they, I think dozens of requests back to back. They're asking her thousands of sheets of paper. Their name is Meg Ryan, not the actress, but somebody else took the same name.
Turn volume up any answer.
I think she meant say fifty or more.
I was thinking fifty one dollars. I'm good.
Yeah. So we can turn it off there. Maybe just pause it, leave that on the screen so I can refer to a couple of those items that are listed there. But, you know, and maybe we ought to have disclosure forms maybe passed out to you in case you have something you want to disclose. I hope we can do that in the future meeting. But the other important thing is the verbal disclosure. If there's an item on the current agenda where you do have potential conflict of interest sometime beginning of the meeting or at least at the beginning of the item, when it's called, making that verbal disclosure. That's really one of the main things should be to do with that. We've had that happen a couple of times with. And and that's great so that everybody just knows. Might not necessarily affect how you act, but really the main thing under state laws that you just at least verbally make that disclosure so that everybody's aware of it. A lot of times we think of conflicts of interest that being, you know, who we know biases. That's not what it is in the context of you acting here as planning commission member. It's pretty much in addition to making those disclosures, it's pretty much identifying if you have a financial interest, right? Or an investment interest. If a company is coming in front of you, that's an applicant on a land use issue. And you have, say, a ten percent interest in that company. You're a silent partner. You own shares. You whatever. It's just a matter of disclosing that, right? It doesn't prevent you from acting or discussing. Sometimes it might reach the point where it's a best practice that you may want to refuse yourself and not be involved on that item at all. It's not necessarily legally required. And as Meg Ryan said, there might be sometimes where you, in order to make sure there's a quorum to act on it, you may be required to participate even though you have declared conflict of interest. The other thing is you shouldn't use your office to have personal gain like she's talking about. So that's something to be aware of. You should be completely neutral in your role as a planning commission member and not use the fact that you're a planning commission member to benefit you personally in any way. And and what that is mainly about is a financial gain, right? And the other thing she talked about is the gifts of fifty dollars or more. So in theory, if you get a gift forty five or forty nine dollars, you're probably fine. But the main thing to remember is any gift, regardless of the amount, if it sways you or causes you to lose your neutrality and be able to be open minded and base your discussion and decisions purely on the facts. And the city code and so forth shouldn't be based on any other relationships, money, gifts or whatever. So any, any questions? Yeah.
So on the personal use or personal gain thing, so does that prevent you from doing something like putting the fact that you're a member of the planning commission on your resume?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because, you know, that does cause people to think.
Right. Yeah, you can still always.
Did this cost more than fifty dollars?
It's so we overpaid or wasted tax. So any other questions?
Yeah.
So with regard to conflict of interest and personal gain, we've talked a lot about affirmative. You know, I stand to profit off of this. What about the inverse? Like I own the laundromat and another laundromat wants to open. That obviously represents conflict of interest and personal gain, but is that covered the same way? If, you know, with regard to like voting against my competition.
Right. And and that's, that's a great question. And obviously the legal minimum is that you've got to verbally disclose at the beginning of the meeting where that item is discussed, right? If if it were me, best practices would be unless I'm required because of a quorum requirement. I would, I would leave the meeting. I would completely recuse myself. I, I wouldn't even be sitting in the back of the room if somebody arguing my facial expressions are affecting them, right? I would literally just leave and come back with that agenda. It's over. Because I think at that point, the reason why it's a best practice in my mind is what could somebody argue that I was doing inappropriate at that point? Yeah, I would remove all doubt. And I'd probably go so far as to make sure that there were enough other planning commission members that are going to be present and drag one or two in to make sure I wasn't forced into.
Well, I think even before the meeting, it would be most appropriate to talk with.
Right. You can always ask me, yeah, if you've got a question or concern. And I'll usually give you both sets of advice. Here's the legal minimum. And secondly, even though it's not required, here's some best practices which you can choose to do. And the whole thing about the best practices is reducing your legal risk to yourself, personal risk liability. And also though, to to do right by the city and community and everything in general. Because the best thing we want to do is make sure there's good processes for everybody, right? So anything else on that piece? So the second, there's two pieces I was going to talk about it. This, this notion of where does your authority come from? So Larry's going to pass out some of those. These are excerpts from, and I've done something similar a couple of years ago, but excerpts from state law and city code. That's where your authority comes from. You may be surprised, but ultimately to, in a roundabout way, your authority does come from a provision of the United States Constitution. Does anybody know what that is? It's been talked about a little bit recently. It's the tenth amendment. The tenth amendment is the last amendment of the Bill of Rights, and it basically just says, hey, whatever authority that the states and the people didn't give the federal government when they created it with the constitution. Everything else is reserved in the states and the people, right? So and then in our case, the state of Utah, through its constitution, let's say here, has passed on different land rights to the cities. And then the cities are allowed to adopt their own city code provisions, which are consistent with the state constitution and states statutes. So, so there you go. If if somebody ever wonders, you know, what constitutional authority, where it comes from, say the tenth amendment. Be surprised if I think. But specifically in state statute where it comes from is L D M A, Land Use Development Management Acts. And in particular, these sections ten, nine, eight, three oh one, three oh two. And they're pretty short and but basically the three oh one says that every city shall have a planning commission. So you have to have one, right? But every planning commission can be a little different from city to city. In fact, it says right there in three oh one that cities can pick the number of planning commission members, out of field vacancies, you know, how to do removals, just all these other little things through city code that can, they can set that forth. The. they can uh, set that forth the.
Keep you updated, informed. I would love any feedback that you have. Uh, that can be directed to either me or or to Nate or Nestor, and and we can get those uh, questions and comments addressed. Tonight, what I'm gonna share with you is a story map or a website uh, for the transportation master plan. The intent here is that this would not only be for while we're doing the project, but to live long after the project's completed, so that that you and the public and and developers or anyone who's who is interested in this can come on here, can quickly scroll through and find the information that they're looking for, rather than having to look through a long document and and read a lot of things. This this makes it really easy and accessible uh, to get through, but still have a lot of good information. So, let's see if this will work. Thank you for letting me borrow your mouse, Larry. Appreciate that. As we scroll through here, just at the beginning, we've got just kind of an intro and a map of of the city. I'm not gonna spend too much time there. In the interest of time, I will go kind of fast through this because I know you have a lot of other things on your agenda to get through. Um, but please uh, stop me if you have questions or or comments. One thing that's been very important on this is is public involvement and and input. We do have a public open house coming up in the next month or so. We're still planning the details on that, but you'll hear of of that shortly, and we invite you and and all the public here to to please come and and provide more input here. Um, we've also uh, done a public survey and sent that out to the community and received lots of good feedback here. And so there's a link here with all of that, uh, the survey results and and community feedback that we had there. Again, I'm not gonna go through all that those details, but they're there. So please click on that and and read through it. Um, with the transportation master plan, uh, an important part of that is safety. And so we do a safety analysis. Sorry, I wonder if I'm far enough away that this mouse doesn't, isn't super responsive. Safety analysis and we look at hotspots, we look at trends in the city. Um, I I'll keep this high level, but it is worth noting that um, West Jordan does have a little bit higher uh, crash rate than the surrounding communities. Um, that is one of the the first things that we noted is is it is a little bit higher when you start looking at, you know, South Jordan and and Taylorsville and Murray and and some of these surrounding communities. So that's one of the things that we're hoping to to start to address. I know um, West Jordan's doing a lot of other things to address that as well. They just uh, are starting a a safe street study that will also dive into those details as well. Um, but we looked at that, identified some some hotspots and some mitigation measures to help address some of those issues. Uh, but that is something to keep in mind. Um, in fact, here, if you look at the stats, you can see those on the screen there. So West Jordan, we see on average, a little bit higher cra- or higher number of crashes there, and then a percentage of those that are severe at 3.2%. You can see the surrounding communities are in the the 1%, you know, 1.8, you know, 1.9. So so that is a little bit concerning and why we're we're trying to focus a little bit here on safety and improve some of that as we go. Okay, uh, wanna talk about.
Pause you just ask a question?
Yes, please.
Sorry, just on the the safety side of things and and looking through. I I absolutely agree. I'm I'm curious, though. If you take that number of crashes divided out by the number or the length of roads in each of these communities, did did you go through that effort? Is there a, what does it compare apples to apples?
Yeah, so you're you're talking about the rate itself. So that is a little bit closer, but still higher. Um, and then if you look at the severe crash rate, that is a rate. So that's the percentage of those. So more of your crashes are more severe or fatal. Okay, so so both of those two trends are concerning. The other thing that we noted is often in communities, most of the crashes will happen on the big UDOT arterials. Okay, so we're talking uh, Redwood, 90th, you know, those those kind of roadways. And that makes sense, right? That we would kind of expect that. But in West Jordan, we noticed that um, there's also a little bit higher percentage uh, on local roads, on on community roads. So usually that's pretty highly weighted toward crashes on UDOT roads. Uh, in West Jordan, those are those are getting pretty close to equal there, uh, crashes on local roads versus uh, state roads. So that that was another concerning thing that we noticed and are trying to address. Yeah. Uh, okay, uh, so I want to talk about a couple of different elements of transportation. The first is gonna be transit, and then we'll go to active transportation and then and then the roadways. And like I said, I'll go kind of fast through here. Um, this is a map of your existing transit network. Um, obviously, we have the red, the red line tracks through here. We've got a number of bus lines or bus routes and then um, uh, quite a few bus stops throughout the city. So I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on the existing. Um, in the future, we've looked at a couple of different things. So uh, we have both the UTA long range plan and the WFRC long range plan. So WFRC is the Metropolitan Planning Organization, right? And they they create these long range plans and help regulate funding there. And then UTA, of course, has their own plans. And so you can kind of scroll back and forth here. Again, sorry, my mouse isn't super responsive. Um, so this is the UTA plan. And then here's the WFRC plan. So they've got kind of those key routes. Um, I'll just point out a couple of key things. Um, one is the new bus route that's planned on 5600 West. You can see that running north, south. Um, out here kind of by Mountain View Corridor. That is anticipated to um, start design here in the near future. And and that is tied to the Mountain View Corridor. So before they can start doing the freeway portion of Mountain View Corridor, um, they committed to to doing this bus route down 56. So that's that's a high priority right now, and you'll you'll start seeing that uh, in the near future. And then as I scroll this back to the WFRC side. Sorry, this looks painfully slow when I do it because this mouse is a little, I think I'm far away, but um, you can see a few other key routes through the city that they plan to increase some service on for buses and stuff there. So.
May I, may I interrupt?
Yes, please.
I don't see a lot of east-west routes planned, and that seems to be our biggest areas of congestion.
I absolutely agree with you, and I appreciate you bringing that up because that's gonna be a theme through uh, through the transportation master plan is is you have a lot of pretty good north-south routes, right? You've got U-11 clear on the west, you've got Mountain View Corridor, Bengeter, Redwood, you know, 13th. You've got you've got some pretty good north-south stuff. East-west is where um, the city struggles. And 90th is really the only one that goes from I-15 all the way out to U-11. It doesn't do that now, but it will eventually, right? And so that's a key route. That that's so important for that to to do that. 78th doesn't make it all the way to I-15, 70th, you know, has the airport there. So there there's some roadblocks, I guess you could call it, or barriers there that make that east-west travel really challenging. And and you guys see that in the congestion on the roadways. So I agree with you on the transit routes. And that is something that we are looking at and plan to make recommendations for for UTA. As a city master plan, we can include those in the master plan's recommendations, but ultimately that's up to to UTA to implement those. But I agree, that's a key need for the city. Okay, um, so active transportation, this um, while active transportation is extremely important, uh, it hasn't been as big of a focus because the city just did uh, an active transportation plan a couple of years ago. And so we are relying on that. That um, this map is actually from the active transportation plan. And so we've got that here, and this previous study went through and planned a lot of these trails, bike lanes, um, active transportation connections there. So uh, what we're doing is is kind of looking through and seeing if there's any gaps in the network, see if there's any missing pieces, but ultimately relying on that active transportation plan that was just recently done not too long ago. Um, so we are adding a few few recommendations there about pedestrian crossings at key key roadways, um, making some recommendations on potential rail trails that could be added, things like that. Any questions on active transportation? Okay, um, and then I'm gonna talk a little bit about the roadways. So when we do a tr- uh, transportation master plan, uh, one of the first things we do is we talk with your staff. We talked a lot with with Larry uh, about future plans, land use plans, uh, development patterns. Uh, your your whole department about different things that are coming down the pipeline, right? Because we want to make sure that we address this future growth. And we take that information and we put it into what's called a travel demand model, okay? And we make sure that we get the right densities planned. Um, I know that's something that's been uh, a concern or maybe not uh, programmed in previous iterations is is some of the densities on the west side of the city. And so we're making sure that we account for that. We have the right densities there, and we know what that travel demand or the the number of cars that we'll see in the future are on these roadways. And so we've got a a series of maps here of these travel demand modeling results, and uh, again, I'm not gonna spend going to detail on them, but um, here is the first one. These are existing conditions. And you can see in green, those are the ones that are operating well now, and the ones in red or dark red are the ones that are reaching failure. And you'll notice a theme that was brought up uh, just barely by the commissioner, that your east-west routes are struggling, right? You see that on 90th and and 78th and 70th. You see a a lot of red there. And so uh, as we go into the future, as additional growth occurs, we see that trend continuing. Okay, so this map is 10 years from now, 2033, and this is our no build, meaning if we didn't do any widening or didn't um, you know, add add new roadway capacity, things like that, what would happen, right? And so as we look at that, we start to see more red uh, or more failing roadways, more congestion, things like that. And then we look out to even further, out to 2050, and we see even more of that there. Um, so a lot of congestion stuff. So that's where we take this information. We say, okay, what projects or what things do we need to do to address this future travel demand? How do how do we uh, accommodate that? And so we develop uh, the capital facilities plan. We develop uh, the future roadway projects. And you can see those here. So this is uh, our roadway project map by phase. Okay, so uh, the projects in red are phase one, so that's in the next 10 years. And the ro- projects in blue are the following 10 years, so um, between 2033 and 2042. And then the the purple is between 2043 and 2050. Okay, so that's looking pretty far out there. That's phase three. And so you see um, a number of projects there on this map. Uh, a number of new roads on the west side uh, to accommodate that future growth and development that we anticipate out that way. Uh, also some projects on east-west, um, on 90th south, uh, 70th, you know, those types of things. So those are some capacity projects that are needed to help accommodate that growth. Uh, I'm gonna pause there for a second. Any questions or comments on on these roadway projects? I know it's the first time you've seen it probably. And and keep in mind, um, if you do have questions or comments that come to you after this, and please continue to look at this this website.
Quick question.
You can give them to us, yes.
Does this include the DOT projections of what they're doing with their roads also, or?
Yes, so you'll notice like this blue on Mountain View Corridor, that is the future freeway uh, on Mountain View Corridor. That's a UDOT project that will not be paid for by the city, right? But it is in the master plan. Yep, same with like 90th, right? That'll be paid for by UDOT. Yep. Okay. Um, as part of this, we also look at intersections. Um, intersections are key. Often, we can have roadways that that flow pretty well up until they reach an intersection, a busy intersection. I know you've all experienced this where you're flowing along and then you hit a busy signal and you have to wait two or three cycles to get through, right? And that's frustrating. And so those those intersections can often be um, the bottleneck. And so we pay close attention to those. You'll see a number of. and then you hit a busy signal and you have to wait two or three cycles to get through, right? And that's frustrating. And so those those intersections can often be the bottleneck. And so we pay close attention to those. You'll see a number of intersection projects up on the map there. Again, this first map is broken up by phase. So red is phase one, and then blue, and then purple for phase three. So we've got a number of of new signals, new roundabouts, just intersection improvements planned. And again, quite a few on the west side. We're anticipating a bit of growth out there. I'm going to go down here to this. This next one, this is a multicolored map here. We have a bunch of different types of of intersection improvements, right? So red, we see roundabout there, blue signals and so on. So a number of different intersection improvements that we have planned for the city through here. Questions or comments?
You have on here green innovative improvement. What is an innovative improvement?
Yeah. Innovative is is something more than just a traditional signal or roundabout. And that's that's where we've got some real capacity needs, and we need to take a real close look at that. And that would usually involve a separate study to look just at that intersection, do some micro simulation and evaluate different alternatives. Sometimes those can be C F Is or continuous flow intersections like you used to see on Bangator. Sometimes they can be through turns like you see in Draper one twenty-third. Sometimes they can just be signals with improved phasing or or specific turn configurations or things like that. So our cuts are being used more often. Our cuts is restricted U-turn crossing, similar to a through turn. So something something unique or a little bit different is what we call an innovative intersection that's need to handle that that capacity. Yep. Okay. This is a map of the existing network out there. We've highlighted the different roadway types. So we've got a map of, you know, the signals and roundabouts out there, arterials, collectors, you know, things like that in the different colors there. So that's the existing network. And then I'll scroll down here to the future. So you can see that we've got a number of collectors planned, arterials, signals and stuff. So you can kind of see what what that will look like out into the future. Whoops, and where those key roadways are. Any questions there? And then finally, this last map. This is something that you can use to turn to explore different things. So this, again, this is open to the public or to, you know, planning commission staff. And you can turn on and off different layers. So if you want to look at things, we have all the transit maps and the roadway maps and the all those different types of things. So you can turn them on and off and zoom in, look closer at the intersection types, things like that. So just kind of an interactive map for people to to use and and look, take a closer look at at different things that are planned. So that was a really quick overview on the efforts on the Transportation Master Plan. I think we're making really good progress. We're still going to be refining things, putting together and and refining the project list. We'll we're we'll start working on cost estimates for those here really quickly. I mentioned the public open house that's coming up. And then we'll be, you know, fleshing out this this story map and the documents and having that ready. And and we'll come back again to planning commission for with final documents. But in the meantime, please look through this and provide any feedback to us or to city staff. We'd love to address any comments or questions, so.
Just in case you have triggered interest afresh in people, can you tell us again when the public next to public hearing will be?
And I apologize, the open house is not yet scheduled. We were working with staff on that. It should be within the next month to maybe six weeks, but in that next month timeframe. And we're working on the details.
If somebody wants to get the particulars on that, how would they do that?
We'll make sure the planning commission's invited to that open house, so Julie will keep you apprised.
Yep, and we we work with Tani and Marie to advertise that to the public so that'll go out on the the website and through their social media channels and and all that. So we try and encourage as many people to come as possible.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, thanks.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Kennison subdivision, sixty-six thirty-four south, twenty-seven hundred west, major subdivision plat, two lots on point eight seven nine acres, R R five C zone. Ivan Kennison is the applicant, is Ivan here. Would you like to step to the lectern, please? Tell us all about your proposal.
It's really pretty simple. This this piece of property is has been in the family a long time. I acquired it about fifteen years ago when my father-in-law passed away and we purchased it from the family. My kids, my, well, my wife grew up on the place and my children used it. Well, originally, it was used primarily for agriculture, raising livestock and garden, that sort of thing. And my kids grew tomatoes and corn for three or four years during their early teenage years to learn to work, I guess you could say. And the fifteen years that I've owned it, the the house in the front, we've pretty much overhauled it, rebuilt it. But but the the property in the back has remained vacant for a number of reasons. Primary reason is there used to be water there, and it sort of disappeared to the extent where you really couldn't grow anything. And and then we kind of maintained it, keeping the grass down, etc. But it's just sort of been there. And we have need for that piece of ground to build a house on. My my son lives in West Valley. And my wife and I are raising four young children. And we need his help, of course. And so that's the purpose. Any questions?
Okay. If there are no questions, we'll excuse you and then hear from Larry Gardner. Thank you.
So the property that Mr. Kennison is talking about is on the corner of twenty-seven hundred west and Brower Circle. Brower Circle was probably dedicated. It is a public street. It was dedicated probably in the early seventies. Right, as you can see on the aerial, right directly to the northwest is a operating business. It's a childcare business that's been there for decades. And then there's some homes also that access a Brower Circle. The new lot, if it's approved, will also access a Brower Circle. The frontage meets the frontage requirement of the zone for a cul-de-sac or knuckle. And one other thing I want to add is that this originally, this property that Mr. Kennison bought was originally one acre in area. However, the city, a few years back, widened twenty-seven hundred west and took some property about point eleven or point twelve acre, point twelve of an acre. And so the lots didn't come out to twenty thousand square feet as ordinance requires. But Mr. Kennison did receive a variance from the Board of Adjustment for these reduced lots. They're about a thousand square feet short of twenty thousand, but they're still very, very good-sized lots. But that variance is in effect. And so that really is not a question the planning commission has to worry about because he's already done that due diligence before he came here for the zone change and then or for the subdivision, excuse me. And so it meets all of the public access requirement. Frontage and utilities are not an issue. The reason this is a major subdivision is right on the south side of Brower Circle. Our engineering department wants a sidewalk installed, which I think is a nice thing for people on and a safe thing for people to, you know, if there's children living on Brower Circle, makes it safer than having them either trespassing or walking down the middle of the public street. And so that's all I've got. Do you have any questions for me? And staff recommends approval of this subdivision application.
Thank you. Mr. Scher's questions? Mr. Thomas?
Just one quick question, Larry. So that variance, that would include the sidewalk and stuff for the?
Correct.
Okay, so that would include that, so we don't have to go through that again?
No, no.
Okay.
Nobody else? This item is noticed for public hearing. So the public hearing is now open for Kennison subdivision. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak on this item? Is there anybody online? If you are online, please raise your hand to be admitted. Star nine to raise your hand, star six to speak. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioner Hatch?
I'd like to make a motion, if I could, please. Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission approve the final subdivision plat for Kennison two-lot subdivision located at sixty-six thirty-four south, twenty-seven hundred west, subject to the following requirements of of approval as listed in the staff report.
Commissioner Allen?
I will second that motion.
There's been a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? The vote is unanimous in favor. Next item, number four, the venue event center sixteen oh nine west, nine thousand south, conditional use permit for a reception center. Angel Aguilar.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. We want to create a venue or reception center down in West Shorten in the area of sixteen oh nine west, nine thousand south. I've been in the business since I was twelve. I've been working as a radio DJ, personal DJ, emcee. I have worked with many venues here in the valley. And this opportunity came along for my family and to kind of like own our venue at this time. And we would like to the opportunity to create our business and hopefully have you guys rent the reception center as well. We promise we'll make you a good deal for the people who wish to. We'll we'll hook you up with the catering and stuff, so just let us know what time. We want to create more business. As like I said, I've been working in the in the industry for twelve, since I was twelve. And I know very well what can create and what could happen. By creating the venue, I can help different best, different other businesses to be part of our venue by subcontracting work. That could be by providing services, servers, catering services, drink services, bartenders, and of course, security. I work the plans out. Most of the security that we have talked about will create an opportunity to have employment. And as we talk to the CD, we would need about one security officer for every fifty people that joins the venue. The capacity, as we were told, it's two hundred people. We're hopefully not get to two hundred. It's usually not not a very good picture where it's crowded, but at least we have the capacity. So we'll have employment for, like I said, security servers and every other business that we can come in and help with the different catering opportunities. It could be different food, it could be different amenities, it could be something simple, cakes, bakery. So we're just hoping to create our our venue there. I have watched every single place that I have tried to at least open up the venue. This one I like the best because I don't have any problem with the neighbors. There's no homes, there's no apartments. And something that I've been looking for, it's something like the like the place that I have found in 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 this little this little mall, which I don't have anyone around. So that's the best thing, that they can be no problems with neighbors or condos. And usually, when I play as a DJ, that's kind of like one of the biggest concerns that we have. And I'm not going to, I know I'm going to lie, but I've been kicked out of a couple of venues because music could get loud and neighbors could get disturbed. But at this point, the plays that we have selected, I think it's one of the best ones to to work and have the reception center. Any questions?
Commissioner Allen?
I appreciate there's no residential neighbors. That's fantastic. You really have picked a good spot. How about the business neighbors? You'll have some overlapping business hours. What what are you doing inside the building to try to contain the sound?
So what we have, we're going to create a little wall, a sound wall that it's next to the restaurant that is pretty much, pretty much the only one that it's open while we're going to be doing, providing services. I believe they close at ten P M. So after that, we wouldn't have any problems with them. Our neighbors next to to the east of the of the venue, it's like a doggy wash and like a pet roomers. So we don't want to have any problems because they close at five P M. They don't open during the during the weekday weekends. So that's kind of helpful for us, too. And our very, very next neighbor, it's like empty right now. So that's where the Halloween story or store used to be. And I don't think they're coming back till October, so. And I don't think we'll have a problem with them either.
All right, thank you. We'll invite you back if we have more questions.
Thank you.
On behalf of the CD, Megan.
Yes, so this is just a conditional use permit for an event center. This is the location. It's in the River Point Plaza. Like was stated, it's all commercial surrounding it for current zoning and future land use. So the, since there's no residential, that takes away many of the noise concerns. So the business hours from Sunday to Thursday will be eleven A M. to twelve A M. And Friday to Saturday from eleven A M. to one A M. And music will end at eleven forty-five, Sunday through Thursday, and twelve forty-five on Friday and Saturday. And most events will be on the weekends. The maximum capacity from the building and safety department is about two hundred people. And they have access to the shared parking for the plaza. There's ample parking, so we don't anticipate that to be an issue. So we have recommended a few conditions of approval. There's been several incidents in the last few years at similar event centers in the city where the police department was called to restore peace. So conditions one through four are related to that to try and mitigate anything happening like that at this event center. And these are related to management being at the every event and having licensed security officers for every fifty patrons when alcohol is served. Patron shall not be permitted to loiter within the parking lot and then licensed bartender for when alcohol is served. And then conditions five and six are related to noise and just having the activities be contained indoors. So with that, we recommend approval with the conditions. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions for Megan?
Yeah, so in a venue like this, there's usually an overflow outside of the of the venue. Has there any been consideration of impacts to other businesses of an overflow?
Do you mean with parking?
No, outside. They want to go outside during the summer and have an event, part of the event outside.
So.
In their business description, they talk about possibility of doing events outside the building in the summer.
Yeah, and we've talked about, I've talked about that with the applicant. So for for now, everything should be contained indoors. And then if they wanted to do something outside, we'd go through a temporary use permit process and look to see if that would be, you know, a good use.
Okay, as long as it's a permitted process, they can they can do that.
Yeah, yeah, we do a separate process for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if the commission has no more questions. Okay, if the commission has no more questions. This item also is noticed for public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? If you are online and wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand, star nine. Okay, we see nobody online, so a public hearing is now closed. Anybody who wishes to make a motion? Commissioner Allen?
I'll make a motion. Thank you. I was just gonna go right off of what you had there. This is perfect. Um, based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanation received today. I move the planning commission to approve the conditional use permit for the venue event center sixteen oh nine West nine thousand South in a PC zone. With the conditions that are supported by substantial evidence as described in the analysis of section four of the staff report. The conditions are imposed to mitigate the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use. I want to add, going through the staff report, it was very well written and did a fantastic job just laying everything out. I really didn't have any questions through the process. Thank you.
Commissioner Hatch?
I'll go ahead and second that.
Motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Hatch, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The fifth and final item on the agenda is the Taylor Farms rezone. Seventy-two twenty South thirteen hundred West rezone nine point seven five acres. From A five agricultural acre lots to, to R one eight single family residential, eight thousand square foot minimum lots zone. Um, applicant is Robbie Thompson. Would you like to step to the lectern, please?
So yeah, Robbie Thompson, Utah Land Company, appreciate uh, this opportunity that uh, we have to uh, talk and. About this land, so I'm representing the family. This is a rezone only, not a subdivision, just a rezone at this point. The uh, the land here has been owned by the, the Taylor family. As far as Sherm knows, at least four generations, uh, and maybe six. So it's goes back uh, for many, many years. It's uh, originally they had about sixty acres. So a lot of the, the housing that uh, surrounds this property was Taylor land. That was uh, eventually rezoned. Family sold it, it was rezoned, and then houses were built on it. Uh, as we see in cities uh, with farmland all the time. Um, Sherm's father, Doc Taylor, in the s- early seventies built a veterinarian. Uh, shop right, that, which is right there that currently uh, uh, operates and will still continue to, excuse me, to operate. So, um. As far as uh. The family, you know, it's taken them a long time, I think, and Sherm could come up and talk about that. It's not easy to uh, to know when it's the right time to sell land. But as you farm and as you kind of grow up in that business, I grew up on a giant cattle ranch and uh. So I understand the work and the effort that goes into that. It's not easy, at the end of the day, it's not easy to operate a farm, one, where there's houses all around it. And so whether you're, you've got hay, or whether you've got a cash crop, or whether you've got animals. Anytime you have housing around it, it's not easy to maintain. Uh, if the animals get out, and Sherm's got stories of his bulls getting out, uh, and so. It's just not, at some point, it becomes tough. The thing is, is if you don't operate and have some kind of income, uh, you cannot have that green belt status, and so then you're. No longer paying green belts, so then you've got to pay the higher property taxes, so it's a, it's a tough thing. And so they've contemplated and, and gone back and forth, but I think the time has finally come where they feel comfortable. Um, disposing of the property. Again, the uh, the veterinarian uh, office will still. Uh, stay there and who knows how long, uh, Sherm's sister will run that, but that's, that's the current um. Thought is she'll keep that and run it as long as possible. Uh, as far as the actual rezone, and I, and I appreciate uh, working with the city, with staff. Did it a great job as far as helping, uh, you know, I work with landowners all over the valley, and I'm really trying to just understand, what is the city? What's the general plan? What does the city want to see there? What's, what steps have been taken to understand? What the city foresees on what the highest and best use is. Uh, I understand that the city just went through a general plan, they just redid the general plan. And so Taylor uh, Jensen that I was working with, he mentioned that this has been designated as low density. And so I made sure that we followed that uh, plan, so it's not a general plan amendment, obviously. Um, it's just a rezone. So some of the, the findings or some of the, the points I want to highlight real quick. Uh, so it meets that general plan being a total density of three point seven nine. Uh, some of the housing, some of the lots to the north, uh, those actually average. Uh, and years ago when it was done, those averaged to the north about sixty-five hundred square feet, so those lots. Just north of, of the property, to the west, those are actually smaller lots, those are about forty-five hundred square feet. And then to the south, you have uh, closer to the eight thousand square feet. These will be from eight thousand to the largest, about fifteen thousand square feet, so. They're uh, bigger than what's the surrounding. Uh, which again falls within the general plan and falls within uh, what the city has laid out. Uh, based on when they redid the general plan. See what else. Uh, we meet, uh, as far as the staff analysis, we meet the, the goals, the objectives. And the policies of the general plan, making sure that we fall within that uh, density. Um, the land use, it's all single family, there's nothing attached, there's no uh, townhomes, I know that's a swear word at times. Um. As far as connectivity, the concept that I used, because you're gonna have to, you're, you will no question have to access. Uh, to the south, you have those two access roads, and so your concept, and as you build this out, those will have to connect, create connectivity. That's something that cities, uh, fire, uh, just being able to, for response times and being able to get into those other subdivision, that's a critical. Piece, and so you've got the two roads that will connect and then come back and connect to thirteen hundred West. So we meet that, uh, as far as the transfer, transportation. Um. And then from a service standpoint, cities always have to make sure that they have adequate sewer, water, all the uh. Wet and dry utilities, and so uh, as far as the city in, in the initial DRC meeting. Uh, the city has capacity, there's no issues as far as connections and hookups. So that's kind of the highlights, hopefully I didn't stare, uh, steal any of Larry's thunder. Um, but that's kind of a, a broad overview as far as what we, what's the, the use and what we're proposing. Uh, at the end, uh, I'm sure there's people here to talk about it, but I'd uh, appreciate it, you know, just having some time at the end as well to, to address any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Thompson? At this point. Okay, thank you. I believe Megan is speaking on behalf of the city.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'll just fill in a couple things. Um. So like was said, uh, this is just the rezone only, there's no subdivision application at this time. So things like lot layout, roads, um, anything like that will be at the subdivision application. So what this is, together with the two uh, lots is nine point seven five acres altogether. And they'd be rezoning the whole thing. Um, the Brookside Animal Clinic uh, would continue to operate. It's currently legal nonconforming, and uh, this wouldn't change that, um, it would just continue to operate as legal nonconforming. Uh, this is the future land use, uh, it's uh, designation is low density residential. And like was stated, um, based on the, the concept plan that they submitted, which is in the staff report. Um. Uh, which is just for basically to, uh, you wouldn't be approving this, but basically to show that they could meet the R one eight standards. Um, that shows thirty-four acres and uh, or thirty-four lots and. It uh, falls within the general plan, uh, residential density. Um, so it meets, meets the future land use designation. So this is the rezone, um, from A five to R one eight. Um, it matches or is less dense, dense than the surrounding zones. Um. And it is consistent with also the public service master plans, and so the city doesn't see any issue with. Uh, servicing any development here at this density. And this is just a quick review of what I have said. Um. And so staff doesn't see any issues with this, so we recommend approval uh, for the rezone.
Thank you. Questions for Megan? Commissioner Hatch?
Thank you. Megan, could you just go back to that previous slide? So my, my question, and I realize we're only talking about the rezone, and it looked like the vet land is included in the R one eight. So if the vet land decides to no longer become a, a clinic, then it would just fall into that R one eight rezone, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
This item was also noticed for public hearing, so a public hearing on Taylor Farms rezone is now open. Uh, my understanding is that we had three people. Um, express opinions by email. Uh, two against this rezoning and one in favor of rezoning. We also have uh, at least three people who have identified that they want to address this issue, so I'll first invite Brian Larson to the microphone.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm a resident of West Jordan who is upset about this potential rezoning of this piece of property. One of my favorite things to do is take my nephew and niece down to this little walkway next to the property. Let them see the cows and the smiles on their faces as I've seen many other families do here. This is a piece of property that's good for the community. It is one of the few green spaces that we have left here in West Jordan. And to convert it to a residential area would be a major loss for the city of West Jordan and its residents. Um, I have a few concerns about the proposed project, such as the environmental impact that it will have, and has there been environmental impact report done on this? I think the town and its residents have a right to know about potential impacts on the natural resources, including water quality, air quality. Wildlife habitat and soil erosion. Before we issue a rezoning to residential, the developers should be required to demonstrate. That the proposed plan will not adversely affect water resources, including groundwater quality, quantity. And comply with regulations regarding stormwater management and erosion control. Also, agricultural land provides vital ecosystem services such as carbon sequestration, water filtration and habitat preservation. Speaking on the habitat preservation side of things, I have personally seen many snakes on this property. Um, and have we looked into seeing if these snakes are protected and part of the endangered species list? And how building residences on this plot might affect them. Um, also converting into residential use would disrupt these ecological functions, leading to environmental degradation, including soil degradation. Agricultural land is typically managed to maintain soil health and fertility. Urbanization can lead to soil compaction and contamination, degrading its quality and reducing its productivity. We want to make absolutely sure that there's going to be no contamination of the water through this rezone and proposed project. Now, according to the Utah Fair Housing Act, the city of West Jordan exercises the authority to plan, zone. And regulate land use in promoting the community's health, safety and welfare. Let's make sure we aren't jumping the gun here. Let's think about the current and future residents. And the community and the health and safety that this project will have on the residents who live here. In conclusion, the rezoning of this nine point seven five acre property from agricultural to residential. Would represent a short sighted decision with far reaching consequences. By sacrificing valuable farmland and disrupting the delicate ecological balance fostered by cattle grazing. We risk irreversibly harming both the environment and the community. Instead, let us explore alternative avenues for sustainable development that respect land's agricultural heritage. And promote the well-being of present and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Reed Hart.
Chair, you may want to, uh, just as a reminder, oh, come on up. Um, the previous speaker did a great job using his three minutes, but I didn't want to catch anybody off guard.
Yes, uh, thank you for the reminder. You have three minutes to speak. Thank you. Up, up to three minutes.
Uh, good evening, my name's Reed Hart. I live um, dead center of the pasture on the uh. On the west side, obviously the Wasatch Mountains are on the east side. Um, I'm more frequently in Robbie's shoes, I'm a professional design builder by trade. No zoning laws, I've been through the process and understand how this goes. Um, I'm here to tell you that the rezoning negatively affects the value of my home and my family and neighbors' general welfare. Um, and. I, I do appreciate all the ecological impacts and everything, like you said, but I'm kind of not naive to the fact that, you know, the general land use plan calls for this to be residential. And that it's probably not the highest and best use for this to be agricultural, indefinitely. I get that. Uh. But this needs to be rezoned the right way. Um, and I don't know when the R one eight land use got established, but that zoning and those ordinances now. Do not protect the best interest of our neighborhood. It's very general, uh. And uh, it, it allows for uses that would adversely affect our property values. I've brought you guys some, I don't know if I can actually. Give this to you, and I, I want to share with you. The view of my back porch materially affects the value of my home. Under the current zoning ordinances of the R one eight zoning, a thirty-five foot tall structure could be built twenty-five foot off of that fence. I would not see the mountains at all. Uh. The proposed zoning as currently written does not uh, align with the guiding principles of the general plan. Uh, the, the specifically to minimize the impact on existing neighborhoods. Um, and encourage a variety of housing types. I mean, this is more of the same, guys, this is, there's, this is everywhere. This doesn't encourage a variety of housing types. Uh, I would come here asking not to not rezone this. What I would say is, I'm asking planning commission to ask for a continuance. Have the developer host a neighborhood meeting. And either, I, I don't know what West Jordan's mechanism is, whether it's a um, a special purpose zoning district or a development agreement, but enforce stricter regulations. On this zoning, uh, that are consistent with the best interest of the neighbor. Uh, I think an unconditional approval here is just not right.
Thank you. Rob Anderson.
Yes, I'm Rob Anderson, and I live uh, just. West of this planned development here, and um. Some of the concerns I have is the, the, the neighborhood to the north is an older neighborhood, kind of rundown. Um. The neighborhood I am is about twenty-five years old, most of the lots around a fourth of an acre. Um, and then I heard it tonight that if this would be rezoned to the zoning, and it would be. A minimum of eight thousand square foot lots. And when uh, the person that presented earlier, he was saying that all of the lots on the north side. Which would be about half of the homes being built, would be forty-five hundred square feet, which would be about a tenth of an acre. Uh, so my, my concern is it doesn't sound like a low, low density. Um. Neighborhood, it sounds like a high density to me, where the lots are very small, which would mean, as the person just before, high. Uh, level homes blocking views of the mountains and whatnot. Um, I'm not really against doing something with this land. Um, basically, it was a place where my. Uh, cockapoo used to go run away and, and enjoy the, the free space there, but it's all fenced around there, so it's not a place. it's all fenced around there, so it's not a place where uh neighbors really would go to to enjoy the green land. But my other concern is the the effect that would have on our neighborhood uh with the additional traffic. They're going to be opening up uh a roadway there that goes into my neighborhood. And um uh we go off uh on Erickson Drive, which is just south uh of my street, Duffy's Lane. Uh it goes into the Redwood Road. The other entrance is the thirteenth west. And so there's going to be a lot of people wanting to go to Redwood Road and it's very hard for us. It sometimes takes me five to ten minutes to turn left onto Redwood Road because of the high congestion of traffic there. That's going to be even worse if we have an additional thirty-two houses or whatever is going to be added to that. So um the progress is not always to me best of of more congestion, more traffic. So uh I would hope those things would be in consideration. And my recommendation is that more low-density lots uh with larger acreage. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here that wishes to address the commission? Yes. State your name and then you'll have three minutes, up to three minutes.
My name's Avery. As residents of West Jordan, Utah, we cherish the open spaces that make our community unique. We love watching cows graze in the pasture and observing birds, squirrels, and even bats that inhabit the field behind us. This peaceful coexistence with nature is under threat due to plans to resume for rezon land for single-family home development. The rezoning not only disrupts our tranquil lifestyle, but also leads to overcrowding of neighborhoods. We search to search in a housing density results in increased property taxes for homes. More importantly, it takes away land from other beings that have these these open spaces, their homes on before us. According to a study by Utah State University, urban sprawl can lead to can lead in significant loss of wildlife habitat and biodiversity. Moreover, it's been reported that higher population density can increase property taxes. We urge local authorities to reconsider this decision and preserve our cherished open spaces. By doing so, they will be protecting both our community's character and its diverse ecosystem. That's all.
Thank you. Yes, sir. State your name for the record and you'll have up to three minutes.
Mike Johns and I live just south of the uh the clinic, the actual clinic. I've lived there for thirty years and I've known the Taylors for some time, used them for vets, for all my animal care all the time. We've been there. And I've really enjoyed the buffer we've had with the north of us and I know Sherman's mom, Gary, Jerry, and Gail always talked about a future park there. And I'm not sure why the city isn't stepping up and considering uh developing it as a city park. Because it seems like we don't have anything really around us. And I don't know why that's off the table. Well, maybe you consider uh acquiring the land for that reason.
Thank you. Yes. Please state your name and you'll have up to three minutes.
My name is Debbie Rebermann. And my son and I have lived um around this park or this property for twelve years now on the north side. The thing that's very evident in in commuting, going anywhere from that property, is that the high density surrounding this property overloads the infrastructure. The roads are narrow. They're small. They're always crowded. It's not unusual to see the roads in disrepair because they're just carrying more traffic than they should. The other thing is I agree with the fact that there's really a lack of green space in the area. And I think that it's critical, if you take the quality of life that comes to the people who live surrounding this property, if they're like my son, they bought the house a large degree because of that, the animals that were behind there and the view of the mountains from his deck, which also would be totally taken away and change the value of his property if this this land is developed. I think that even though this is not a site planned for approval, I hope that the planning commission will keep in mind how important it is to have green space in this area. It it just is, it is underserved by parks and nice places to walk. I think that the the wear and tear on the infrastructure from this high density is is tough on taxpayers, is tough on the city, and it's tough to commute among. No matter where you go in West Jordan anymore, it takes forever. Uh the traffic is congested. I saw the traffic report. I see what's being done. But building high-density residential in this area doesn't seem to be the way to go in this particular circumstance. I certainly support the rezoning of agricultural property. I just hope that the city planning commission will keep in mind quality of life for the residents who have been there, the views and the attributes to the properties of the homeowners and their home values. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go to those online. Raise your hands by pushing star nine.
So there is somebody online, but they don't have a name there. It is uh the Samsung S M A seven one six U.
Yes, my name is Haley Barton.
Go ahead.
Um I just live to the south um of that road um on Leesal. And I I guess my concern is there's a little, we call it a secret passage that connects our road to the other road, fourteen seventy, and with more traffic, if we were to, if they were to build a road through that, it would, I don't know, I kind of, we we chose our house specifically to be kind of on a dead-end road or like, you know, not as much traffic. And so I would just really um not really be as excited to have lots more traffic, flow of traffic coming through. But then also, that's how my kids get to school is through that, that little secret passageway, for lack of a better term. And I I also love the, I don't know which gentleman said, but um about a green space and a park. Um because there isn't really parks near our or in our neighborhood, so that's that's my two bits. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's uh Kelly Bixey.
Kelly?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Uh so it's actually Kelly Brixey. I don't know if that matters. Um anyway, so I live just south um of the a lot, kind of in the middle-ish. Um and I kind of, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but kind of just reiterating what most everybody else has said. My kids also use that little secret pack, oh my gosh, secret passageway to get to school. Um you know, it makes it a little bit safer, a little bit shorter to get to and from the school. Uh you know, and and like others, we bought this lot big part because of the quiet streets and kind of having, you know, a little bit more open space, um less traffic. You know, it it I'm, you know, we're also a little bit concerned about all of, you know, having all of the extra houses and how much more traffic there's going to be, not only for, you know, the safety of kids walking to and from school, but also, you know, trying to, as the other gentleman said, trying to get onto Redwood in the mornings and after schools in the evenings is sometimes a nightmare. And if we've got, you know, that many more people all trying to get onto Redwood in the same place, onto thirteen hundred west and to the same, you know, in the same sections, it's, you know, the lines down the road will be a lot longer. Um and you know, it just takes, I don't know that the, you know, the way that it's set up can handle that without adding extra time to everybody's, you know, commutes and drives. Um I do understand, you know, the family that owns the lot wanting to rezon it to, you know, be able to sell or do different things. And I, you know, I'm, as others, all for the rezoning, but would ask to postpone and reconsider other options for rezoning. You know, a park would be absolutely fantastic. It still leaves, you know, more green, more trees for the environment, for whatever little creatures and animals live, you know, in that area. You know, so it allows it to be rezoned, but it also allows the residents of West Jordan to have another space that is green because there isn't very many, you know, so it allows a lot more of that kind of stuff. So I I don't know. We really like the way that it is, but obviously, you know, change has to happen. We just would ask that reconsider the type, the type of change that's being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, uh George Reynolds?
George?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have up to three minutes.
Um yeah, um well, I live on the south side of um that area as well and um I know this is a rezoning, but they they put out the platton and everything like that. But um there's a major concern with um the traffic that goes through there um through Leesal and the bottom of Erickson Park. That's Character's Lane that turns into um the dead end there. If that goes through from thirteen hundred and goes through our road all the way to Redwood Road, it turns into Bora Bora, which is a nightmare. People drive forty miles an hour down there trying to cut across thirteen hundred just to get through um, you know, missing lights and driving through the neighborhoods and it's the speeds are very high. And so those roads, most of us live down here, like um some of them have said, because of these conditions alone. And we've always said, if the road goes through, well, it's going to kill the property values for one. And most people that are living on there, um I mean, it's a joke that we're going to move as soon as that road goes through, but it's not crying kind of a joke because we see what happens to the other roads that are going through. And um, you know, I I I know they want to make money by selling. I mean, that's the reason to sell it is, you know, they're going to make a lot of money doing it. But I mean, it's going to damage the rest of the neighborhoods putting that road through. And instead of it making its own little neighborhood into a cul-de-sac dead end, they want to put it through to two other roads. It's going to really damage the rest of the neighborhood. That's all I have.
Thank you.
That's all I see with online.
Yes, sir.
I'm Jeremy Brewster. This street going through to cause major issues for going from thirteenth west to Redwood Road. I have no problem with the the land being developed. I actually think it's a good idea. I just am really concerned about the traffic coming from thirteenth through Redwood. We already have Bora Bora. There's multiple, multiple through streets that take you from thirteenth west to Redwood. We don't need to add another one. Everyone said it's difficult to get out at the end of Erickson Park Drive. It is extremely difficult to get out of Erickson Park Drive. We don't need that traffic. There's no reason I can't turn around, go back out on thirteenth west or even turn and go through Leesal because it doesn't go all the way to thirteenth west. It just takes you over to Bora Bora, which aren't, it goes east to west. My main concern, like you said, is just uh traffic. Lived there for twenty-seven years. I don't want all the cars coming up and down the road. Have kids. All the neighbors have kids, grandkids, pets. Don't want the traffic. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Uh my name's Sam Craw. I also live on the uh southwest corner of this property. I my biggest concern is same as everybody else, traffic. We've got a great little spot, great neighbors. The best ones, in my opinion, are the cows, no offense, but the the biggest issue that, and everybody keeps saying it, is the traffic with the plan. I mean, uh the Taylors have every right to to, you know, try and do what they want to do with their property. And I don't think anybody faults them for that. That that's a tough decision to make, especially with, you know, family-owned property for a long time. I'm I'm sure they've put a lot of thought into this. The the biggest concern is the traffic and the way the plan was set out uh with the map that was sent to everybody. These two dead-end streets, running it through from thirteenth is going to create a nightmare for everybody in there. And that's my biggest concern is all those connections. If it was uh just like uh Mr. Brewster said and uh Mr. Reynolds, if it just come in off of the uh off of thirteenth, I've got no problem with it and I don't think most people do. It's just all the connections and the traffic is what's going to cause the problems. That's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anybody else online? Anybody else in the audience? Uh point of order, can we invite invite the applicant back up to address the concerns that we've heard?
Yeah, yeah, after you close the public hearing.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. We'll invite Mr. Thompson back up to address the concerns that have been expressed.
I think I got most of them written down. First off, I think the easiest one is uh there was mention of this being high-density. This is not high-density. Uh nowhere in the application and nowhere did I say that we would develop forty-five hundred square foot lots that would not meet the R one eight code. So that is uh completely incorrect. R one eight has an eight thousand square foot minimum. Uh when I spoke regarding forty-five hundred uh square foot lots, that was the existing lots to the west. And uh I believe there's some actually to the north. So our proposal is is substantially larger lots. So I just want to clear that. Values of home, this is not my first rodeo as far as doing rezones and working with cities. It's always the number one, probably one of the number one complaints. There's always three. Kids are going to die in the streets. Uh when there's new housing that's built, you're going to have traffic that's going to happen and then um values, home valuation's going to go. And so this is nothing new to me. Uh let's talk about values of homes. New home construction will actually lift values as you create the new homes. Any new home that is built will not take away from existing housing. That's not how you look at real estate. That's not how they're appraised. And so that'll have no impact on the existing housing. If anything, it'll increase the values because you'll have brand-new, nice, beautiful homes next to older housing. So it does not impact your values. As far as traffic goes, uh look, those two roads, dead end, that was not our design. That was, cities try to create connectivity for fire. They don't like dead ends. Uh even cul-de-sacs have minimums on how long they can be, how many units can be. I love cul-de-sacs. Uh love, I would be happy to put cul-de-sacs, but I just know that that's not how that's designed and laid out. And so we have to connect uh and looking at how you would, I'm not sure where the, why people would get off thirteenth, snake through a neighborhood to get to Redwood. That I I'm not sure why you would do that. It seems like that would be the longest route. Uh you have plenty of our already existing connectors coming off thirteenth. There's one to the north. I mean, they're all over thirteenth uh that go to Redwood. So again, that's uh part of the design. That's part of how cities are laid out and mapped out. So as far as traffic goes, uh I know it's sense, you know, it's a sensitive subject. You buy a house, there's a dead end. I understand that, but at some point that was going to have a connection. That was the intent of the city from the moment they uh planned that out. Increased property taxes. Property taxes are a function of housing value. Property taxes are a function of housing value. In the state of Utah, we have a dramatic housing shortage. Why houses are so expensive is because we not have enough housing stock. As we continue to create more housing stock, maybe that'll level out the housing and the property taxes. But that is not, that is not a function of new housing. New housing actually solves that and helps level and table that. So that it's not, we don't turn into where we're just seeing these huge inflection points, which we've seen over the last ten years, COVID being one where housing values took off. It's just a matter of housing shortage. Family is a hundred percent open to a future park. If anyone wants to approach them, buy it, donate to the city as a park, you know, assuming the city would accept it as a park. Or if the city wants to buy it from the family, a hundred percent open to that. That's not off the table. The family would love to, if that's a legitimate option, they would be open to that, no question. As far as the secret passage, I've seen that when I've walked the property, any future subdivision will have sidewalks. And so that you'll have walkability, you'll have safety. It'll have to meet all the city codes of any new subdivision. So you'll have to have sidewalk, park strip. So it'll meet all that city code. Let me make sure.
Can you wrap up in?
I think that's, I think that's, I think that's it.
Commissioners, time for debate. Commissioner Hatch.
Thank you very much. I have to, I'll just take the onus on me to represent the community, what our abilities are. And we have to, we have a very strict guideline. We have to, the property owner has a right to develop his land. This was zoned as R one eight last year when the general plan was approved. So there were plenty of open meetings where you could come and voice your concern and your worries at that time. So I think this is the best use of this land. I would love it if it were a park, but the cost to do that is, has to be on the city or a private owner. And I don't think anyone is in the, at least that I know of, is in the ability to do that. I live very near to here, and I use the Jordan River Parkway as my green space, and it's a beautiful place to walk. It's maintained by the city. It's a great location. So I would be absolutely in favor of this rezone. I think with the stub streets that have been in, those, that connectivity is a great way to access the community for fire and emergency services. And I think this fits in with the general plan as in the idea of what the city had in mind all along. So thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, I'll just kind of echo with the comments made previously. Tonight, we are only voting on the rezone only, and this is just a recommendation to the city council. So you're still able to speak at the city council meeting when this becomes before them. They're the ones that actually can legislate this. As Commissioner Hatch says, we've got some pretty tight guidelines. I have known the veterinarian clinic there for a long time. I have actually taken all my pets there. It'll still remain there, still be a good place to take your, your animals. But again, we're only here to vote on the rezone. And that's just a recommendation. Again, we are not, I don't have the ability to legislate that. Not up here, at least not at this time. So just wanted to make sure that you guys are also aware of that. Again, I would love to see that be a park or the cows. I love the cows. I made a mention of that in our meetings earlier to this, but I don't see that's going to be an option. And so we're up here, we've got to review everything, and the best option is single-family homes, the one-eight zoning, which does meet the recommendations of that master plan and of the neighborhood. So of all of the things that are being presented or are possible, this is probably one of the better things, and this is only a rezone. There still has to be a plat that will be presented later on, and that's where we can discuss some of the things like traffic and some of the other items. But for right now, tonight, it's just for the rezone, and that's my two cents worth.
Commissioner Allen?
I don't know if I need to speak anymore. Look, government's complicated. And just as Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Hatch have mentioned, we are looking at a rezone that matches the master plan. It's a for-sure thing. We cannot say no. It matches every requirement of the rule. A lot of what has been brought up today, I think, is very important. One of the things I was taking notes, but I wrote, this isn't public space, it's private land. In other words, the public has very little right to the property and very little right to say what is being used or how the property is being used. However, I think the community coming out has done a mostly good job of trying to navigate what is that small amount of right that the public has to this property. We've brought up some really good concerns, all of which are really more toward the plat. So when the plat comes up in a couple of months or sometime at that point, I hope to hear from you all again then. Hopefully, we have a traffic study. Hopefully, we have some ideas on some of the environmental assessments, some of those kind of matters at that same point in time. I would highly, highly encourage the developer. This is a, I can tell that this isn't your first rodeo. It came across a little bit cynical. This is not an us versus them. Let's try to partner with the community as best as possible. Noting, I absolutely agree with most of your statements. But yeah, the way that we can talk with one another, as the governor has suggested, let's disagree better. But that's, that's what I'm thinking. I'm happy to provide a recommendation on this or a motion if anybody else, nobody else has questions.
Before you do that, I'd like to get in my nickels worth. First of all, I do appreciate all of you who've spoken up on this application. And I think the commissioners, my fellow commissioners, have spoken very eloquently on the criteria that must be met and the obligations of the commission. So I won't reiterate that. Just on a personal level, I would note once again that this is private property, and the developer does have a right to do what they want with that property within the established codes and guidelines of the city. I personally have faced this exact same situation in at least three places I have lived where we have built a new house that had a beautiful view with cows and horses, and in one instance, lots of turkeys down in Sand Peak County. And in every instance, we faced these same issues and development just happens. It's perhaps a bit naive to assume that you can live in a growing city and a growing state and not face these issues. And the city ordinances and code and building regulations try to balance the needs of private property owners. And that's what we're faced with, is balancing those needs. With that, I'm ready to hear a, unless there's further comments, ready to hear a motion.
If I could chime in, just one legal issue that came up. Somebody mentioned the possibility of a master development agreement or a development agreement. Recent changes in state law, including just this last session that recently ended, make it clear that as cities, we should not require a development agreement unless it's a specific zone where it's needed. We do have a lot of those specialized zones. However, the R one eight zone is a standard Euclidean zone that doesn't require development agreement. Or unless the applicant requests it, which he hasn't, or if there's some other legal reason. Otherwise, there's the potential for the city to get into trouble, so to speak. So I just wanted to bring that up, just to clarify.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen?
Megan, do you have the?
You're awesome. Thank you. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the rezone of nine point seven five acres from agricultural five-acre minimum lots to single-family residential eight thousand square foot minimum lots, the R one eight zone, subject to all requirements of approval.
Commissioner Hatch?
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Hatch, all in favor? Are there any opposed? Voting is unanimous for approval. This will be forwarded to the city commission, city council. And once again, you all will have the opportunity to address your concerns before them when it comes to the, when it goes to the city council. Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you. We are adjourned.